Now it's going to the next part of the program where we have our keynote speakers. Our first keynote speaker is Mary Beth Bykowsky. She's with the California Department of Insurance and she's going to be talking about safer from wildfires.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Or have I got the correct thing? Okay. Today I'm going to give you an update on the nation's first twelve fire safety regulations, which is intended to bring down the cost of insurance. Oops, sorry. I'm going to go through this. Okay. So CDI worked with the state's emergency response and the fire agencies, CAL FIRE, CAL OES, and we created consistent actions that were all telling you to do the same thing, right? So what we are telling you to take the same actions as homeowners. We call it at California, it's the CDI, the Safer From Wildfires Program. So Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lard has directed the insurance companies to provide discounts for homeowners who take actions to make their property, their homes, their communities safer. The regulations now were accepted by the Office of Administrative Law in October of last year. It's not a law, it is a regulation that went into effect. Okay, so there is a slight difference. And the insurance companies had until April 12th of this year to submit these new rates for our approval. So now we are trying to go through all these rates. Everybody waited till April 12th, all the insurance companies to submit these rates, but we have to approve all of them. I can't tell you how long that is going to take, unfortunately, but it is a priority of the commissioner and we are honored. In the meantime, we have been urging homeowners and communities to take actions to make everything safer. So everything that you see here, you will now get a discount for on your policies. There are all the things that everybody, all the fire agencies have been telling you, but we find these last two things, becoming a firewise community or becoming a fireless reduction community. That is a new designation that just started last year. It started as a pilot program down in Southern California and it's gaining traction. It's moving up to Northern California, so it is another option for homeowners. Okay, so what are the benefits of the regulations? It's about transparency and your risk score. In the past, the insurance companies did not give you your wildfire risk score. A lot of homeowners don't know you actually get a wildfire risk score. So they take all of these things into consideration, plus the three main things that the insurance agent pointed out, the slow thinking like that are very important, right? If you live, I'm starting to say it on a sand drier's fault, you're going to pay more for earthquakes insurance as well. So there are certain things that really figure you before your insurance. Okay, you're going to get your score and you're also going to get the factors that went into determining your score. So now you can look, pick up the regulation. I have made copies for everybody here if you want to take them home with you. You can look at the regulation and look at all of the things that they're giving you discounts for. And as a homeowner now, you can make a plan for yourself. Some things are, aren't that expensive. You can buy some vets for the cheap. You don't have to buy the most expensive ones. It's more, obviously, it's more expensive to put on a new roof and such. But you can make a plan and do as much as you can here by year. Because I have to tell you, part of the reason why insurance is so expensive is the risk I've got on. In these last four years, we've had the worst fires in California's history. Insurance companies, we don't like them because we have to pay the bill. But what are we going to do? We don't have insurance, right? There are those companies. So part of the insurance, Department of Insurance responsibility is also to keep the insurance companies solvent. California, everyone that knows this, is the largest insurance market in the United States and is the fourth largest in the world. We have, they make over $326 billion a year in California. So there, nobody is going to be fleeing California. Insurance will be available, but it's part of our responsibility too, to bring down the risk scores. It's a partnership, that's the way I do it. Okay? Okay, so the other information about the wildfire risk score. You're going to get it in four different ways. When you apply your new policy, you will receive it within 15 days. Before you renew a policy, it should come within 45 days. And before you are renewed, 75 days. And when you complete your mitigation on your property or any request or revised score, that should come within 30 days. So we went over each action to get over the discount quickly. But we do not know what the wildfire discounts are going to look like for these actions. And that's based on Prop 103 that passed over 30 years ago. Basically, the rates for insurance companies start off on their previous year's loss data because that goes back to keeping insurance companies solvent as well. So they're all going to be different. You're not going to get the same sort of discount from each insurance company, but we have three spots on our website where you can go and compare insurance policies. There are spots for you to look at to find out who is riding in your area, help you find a company, you can look at the license of a broker. There's lots of information on our website that we'd be moving you to take a look at. Also, if there's something that's happening, if you have a complaint with the insurance company, call us. Like I said, we are also the biggest consumer protection agency in the state. We have an 800 number, which is manned by compliance offices. So if you want to file a complaint, they will ask if you want to fill out a request for assistance. Once you do that, compliance officers can look at your individual policies and be your advocate. And lastly, the regulations give you, gives you the right to appeal. That is new. If you're not happy with what your score is, you can appeal. We're telling, advising people, if you make these improvements to your home, keep your receipts. There are some apps that you can just, when we purchase them and put a write-in on your app, so it's there in the cloud where you take pictures because you can find the insurance companies now. Okay, and also the regulation requires the insurance companies to let you know how to appeal. I'm going to skip over the HOAs and I'm going to discuss also what to do if you can't find insurance. Tips for finding insurance. So first off though, under with these regulations, we expect more businesses, homeowners and communities to make the investments into their mitigation. That will cause greater community resilience, reduce losses from wildfires, and then we will be able to have more plentiful insurance at better rates. It's important to note that CDI does not have the ability to force any insurance company to write insurance for anyone in place. It's just not within our jurisdiction. But this regulation attacks the root cause of nonrenewals and that's the wildfire risk. Okay, so if you have a nonrenewed, I have a flyer out there with a page full of suggestions, but the first thing you should do is contact your insurer and ask them, if I make some mitigation actions, can I keep my insurance? It doesn't always work, but sometimes it does. If it's not working for you, ask your insurance agent if they know who else is riding in your territory because it's a small network, you know? We've heard the insurance agent speak before. You can tell she cares about your community and they do. I have a neighbor, I live in El Dorado Hills, she lost her insurance. She called a couple of local people. I have a friend living there, so she did not work for the department. But she found an insurance company in Oregon. It's not regulated by the Department of Insurance, but it was a reliable company and she's paid less than what she was paid from her California insurance company. If you think you were dropped unfairly, give us a call, we'll look into that. And we do, they do talk about the online tools we have, the residential insurance company contact list, your home insurance finder. Pick up a hand out of the table outside, so we'll go over these suggestions. So the Fair Plan. Additionally, the department expects the Fair Plan to comply with these regulations and offer discounts for mitigation. Now, if you're the Fair Plan and you are in a firewise community, some of you may not know it, you're entitled to a 10% discount. So a lot of the agents don't know about it. If that's you, please give them a call and let them know. These are real regulations now. Reform in the Fair Plan has been a top priority for our department. The commissioner ordered the Fair Plan to offer comprehensive policy options. Those are the DICs that we were talking about earlier. The Fair Plan will sue the commissioner because they don't want to pay for that extra DIC. Basically, you have your DIC and you have the Fair Plan, you are paying to administrative, administration cost. So why not join them together and let the same company offer you the DIC without that extra registration cost? Insurance Commissioner was sued by Fair Plan and who they went to court and he won and now they're appealing that. Been going on for a couple of years, but he is fighting for that. The Fair Plan increased insurance coverage from $1.5 to $3 million. It's the first increase in over 20 years. So that was a big thing. Oh, okay, so here's our grant page. There's lots of grant money out there. And now that you are in some of these firewise or fire safety council areas, there's a lot of money out there for you. We will be happy to write support letters for you. There's a grant portal there. All right? On our website. Okay, one of the things that we have been asked about are these new wildfire hazard maps from CAL FIRE. People are afraid that that is actually going to make them lose their insurance. Those hazard maps are different from the risks that the insurance companies look at. The maps have been around since 1985. What it actually does is help the local communities to know where the hazards are. And I was in the residence speaking at an event a couple of weeks ago. The people there were upset because their risk has actually dropped and now they said to me, they're not going to be able to get any more grant money. So take that as a positive thing, that we know where the, well, they know where the focus is, right? If you have, if you're in a hard hazard area now, you know you're going to have the power agencies helping you out. Okay? Okay, so if that's it, if you have any questions, you can go to insuranceasociate.gov or call the health guard. We do, like I said, have compliance officers here call. There's a two-minute callback rate, so we will try to help you with that. Thank you.
This is Hannah and the other folks. We're passing out the cards so that you can write your questions down. Our next speaker, I'd like to ask Sheriff Blackhoff to come on up and he's going to talk about his role with regards to the OES and how they respond when there's a wildfire emergency. Sheriff?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Excellent.
Good. What a beautiful day in El Dorado County. I think we need to lighten this crowd up a little bit. We're going to be here to have some fun. So they've asked me to come in and talk a little bit about what our role is in this whole thing with the Office of Emergency Service and what do we do? So, and I'll put out a little disclaimer. I have four of our experts here. Lieutenant Troy Morton, Sergeant Wes Flag, Deputy Jeff Whitlock and Deputy Greg Almaz are here. So if you have a real technical question, these guys live, breathe and eat this stuff. They do it every day and they've been doing it for about three to four years. So they've been through all the big fires and it seems like we've been in a constant state of emergency activation. Our OES, we've been well versed in what we're doing in there. So the sheriff's office, we prepare and train. And like I said, the last couple of years have been real world training with our agency with all the emergencies that we've had in our county. We network with other first responders and fire agencies. So we're ready to respond and support the community and protect it. We provide the public with information on how to be ready when disaster occurs and our ultimate goal in any emergency is to protect life and property. Our first priority when we respond to fires is to get our citizens out of harm's way by facilitating evacuations. And larger scale incidents such as CAL FIRE, mosquito sand, King Fire and Angora, the activation of our emergency operations center is needed so we can collaborate with all the other county offices as well as state and federal agencies to coordinate and support the incidents. Examples are to facilitate large extended evacuations and provide security details for the evacuated areas. We assist and support large scale mass care centers, animal shelters, and provide coordinated public information to keep our public informed and connect people with resources available such as Red Cross, nonprofits, the El Dorado County Food Bank and other resources that are needed for those that are evacuated. We have two evacuations orders. One is evacuation order, the other is an evacuation warning. An evacuation order is an immediate threat to life. This is a lawful order to leave now and the area is lawfully closed to public access. And then we have an evacuation warning. That's a potential threat to life and/or property and those require additional time to evacuate. And those with pets and livestock should get that stuff and leave right then. And others should be prepared to leave at a moment's notice. How we go about notifying people? In-person notification is the best way. You'll see us in most fires driving into neighborhoods as people are trying to get out and we have our licensed fires on, we're on the PA system and we're making announcements to get out of the area. And then the other ways that we're doing, we combine that with the emergency telephone notification systems, El Dorado County Emergency Alert, and we can, which we can deliver eye volume, multi-language, voice text, emails, social media updates and voicemails with information. Our other objective and our role is to protect property. So when an area is evacuated, we're responsible for protecting that area. So we shift gears and we not only still provide protection for the county, but we're also putting lots of units in those areas that have been evacuated. I go back to CAL FIRE and mosquito and there were days that we were deploying in excess of 75 to 100 law enforcement officers from across our region that come into El Dorado County to go in and provide 24-hour protection to those areas to protect it from looters and those that are out there trained upon the community. Want to talk a little bit about our new emergency notification system, which is called RAV. And you can sign up for it right out there in the hallway. Spread the word. But this emergency notification will send information to your cell phones, your emails, your landlines, where we can select a geographical area which receives the alert. The alert goes out to every person in that area who has signed up with El Dorado County Emergency Alert Systems. During emergencies and these fires that we've had, we ask our citizens to go to trusted sites during the disasters such as our website, EDSO website, or El Dorado County Fire Sites for ongoing information during the disasters. And please do not trust what you see on social media unless it's verified through EDSO or CAL FIRE. When I was going around to the evacuation centers doing the last couple of fires, you'd see it all the time. People would hear stuff on social media about areas that would get evacuated and these areas were still, it either mop up status, they're still actively burning. And what that does is creates big issues. People, you know, getting, going back into those areas and causing traffic jams and we're still trying to get emergency medical and fire engines and stuff into these areas. So we ask that any information that comes up, you verify that through us or one of the other trusted websites. One of the things we've unfortunately had to get into the business of the last couple of years is recovery. And what you can expect in recovery is we have a team consisting of EDSO personnel and employees from the CAO's office, which will facilitate recovery property, property clearing, passing along available resources such as loans or grants, or walking our citizens through the process of recovery from the fire that destroys our home and ensuring that mandates such as hazards, materials and dangers are addressed. Again, we have our RAV sign up out there and I urge everyone, if you haven't done so already, get signed up with that program and do more than that. Spread the word to your neighbors and get everybody signed up on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Our next speaker is State Senator Alvarado Gil and she's going to be talking with us about the work she's been doing at the state level to help our rural communities in becoming, in regards to wildfire. Senator, thank you.
So all five foot two of me was going to come behind the podium here, but mine is the milk crate. You're going to kind of see me kind of dancing back and forth. So thank you for your, for your patience here. So hello? Thank you so much. We've got, we've got it. All right. Thank you so much. I have to say that coming to El Dorado for me is, you know, it's an honor. I'm always impressed when I engage with all of you and I appreciate always bringing your stories, your experiences, your questions and your concerns and your collaborative spirit. That is how we address our issues and that is how we make real change here in our district. I want to say, celebrate Happy Special Districts Week and thank CSD for being here. We are elected officials, but I want to give you that honor of being here in the room as well as Cameron, let's see here, our fire districts, our water district leaders and others representing our special districts today. I was proud to introduce the resolution at the state senate floor just last week, establishing this week as Special Districts Week and we have a certificate for you as well today. I also want to acknowledge our elected sheriff and our county supervisor, Turnroom, for all their leadership here from day one when I was elected in December, or when I took office in December, they were the first ones and ready to collaborate and represent here in El Dorado. Through the natural disasters, the rains, the floods, it was those two that consistently reached out for resources and support. So I just want to give a special thank you. You can clap there. Thank you so much. Thank you to great Cameron Park Fire State Council for inviting us here today, particularly because you embrace the different layers of government. You have federal, state and local here. So that is exceptional. Thank you for that. And then before I proceed, I want to ask that we honor the first responders that are in the room. My brother is a service officer and my daughter is with me today and her dad is a veteran. So I want to make sure that I can honor all of our people who serve our country and join me in a round of applause for our people. All right, we're going to get down to business. California State Senate District Four is the most beautiful district. Not just because I live there and you live there, but it has the most incredible landscape. So my district runs from Truckee in Nevada City all the way down the eastern back, through the eastern line of Nevada into Dadeo County. So we have 13 counties on the eastern side of Highway 99 and all of El Dorado County. So the one thing that I have noticed, I have been through the county at least on four tours since December and the one thing that continues to amaze me is the resiliency of our community. From years of unrelated wildfire seasons that seem now to last nearly all 12 months long to devastating winter storms that have even greater risks and impacts of area, including our wildfire burns, cars resulting in our mudslides, flooding and avalanches most recently. Our mountain communities have a challenge and every single year, we have more and more challenges to overcome. Living through these realities and dangers and impacts that come to those disasters is a top issue of my constituents and they share it with me all over the district. I know these realities firsthand as well. I live in Jackson and a lot of the experiences that you have with wildfires and insurance, I live that with you. I am blessed to have my forever home. I specifically chose it to be in the mountains amongst the wildlife and I understood that there was going to be a more responsibility as a homeowner. What I didn't understand was even though I was doing all the defensive space, clearing my area, working with my neighbors, that I was not going to have any discounts with insurance. So I'm very happy to hear that we're moving in that direction. The other thing that I didn't understand, that I do now, is that the Fair Plan is going to be my only option. And it was going to be the only option to cover a home that had less of a value or had more of a value than what the Fair Plan is willing to offer. So that just does not make sense. So I take this issue on as a personal issue because I live it every day and I'm the only member of legislature that is on the Fair Plan, but all of my neighbors are as well. So let's see here. So how's affordability? That's one of the things that I get asked a lot. Here in our mountain communities, the cost of homeowners insurance makes it very difficult for us to make ends meet, particularly those who are on mixed income, those who are residents, those who are, have asked to retire or have chosen to retire in our district. And many of our homes, our ranches, our farms, our businesses have been in our families for a long time. So the cost of insurance has been the number one issue prohibiting that affordability of homes. So through persistent action and grassroots level across our communities, we have been able to partner with the insurance commissioner to ensure that the Fair Plan issues are first and foremost of everything that we've discussed. See here. So one thing that I hit the ground running was joining the Senate Insurance Commission or the committee. I've been working with Sheriff Rubio and my colleagues to help bring forward actions that ensure that we work towards restoring healthy market. We did have an oversight hearing with the Fair Plan as well as with local insurers to really understand just how devastating the market is right now. And over and over again, I hear how fragile it is. And so we really have to bring forward solutions. The other thing that I've heard over and over again is when we had town halls about firewise communities and when the insurance commissioner came through California, that by far, El Dorado has the strongest attendance. So to me, that means that right here is where we have the solutions. Now we just need to bring our voice and make that resonate in the Capitol. So one thing I want to just make sure is that without our beautiful nature or our playgrounds, our mountains, our lakes, our heavens, our rivers, forests, I mean, we are the playground in California. And those who visit our area also have to be educated in how to take care of our area. We know that wildfires are started by other people who don't understand how to live or how to even respect our forests. And so we want to make sure that we're being good stewards, but that we are also holding others accountable, particularly PG and other agencies that come in and create some of these wildfires. In the past five years alone, we've had over 10 million acres burned here in California and we've lost thousands of homes and tens of thousands of those have been displaced in evacuations. I was evacuated twice in the Electra Fire and in the CAL FIRE, like many of you. The state of California through CAL FIRE spent approximately $1.2 billion for emergency fire suppression in 2022 compared to just over 10 years when CAL FIRE spent about $90 million on emergency fire suppression. This is critical because it is not getting better, it is getting worse. While we're blessed to have plenty and at times many are arguing too much rain this year, we cannot let our guard down. Just this week, the governor made a commitment on the site's reservoir. In District Four, we have an above groundwater storage project in the county of Stanislas along the Diablo Ranch Mountains. This is a priority as well. We have to have more direct, intentional programs and funding for above groundwater storage. We have the best water storage here in Senate District Four and it's in the snow caps. So once those melt, we have nowhere to put them. So we have to take that on as Senate District Four representatives and voice to ensure by the time that our kids are in the workforce, we cannot be saying that we're still fighting for reservoir. So through legislation that I've introduced, I've been working to relieve the budget burdens on local fire districts and increase funding to access rural water districts to help improve our fire suppression capabilities through infrastructure. So I have two Senate bills. Senate Bill Senate Bill 470 is a wildfire bill that I brought forward in collaboration with Tocco Public Utilities District that will increase grant funding for opportunities to support our rural water districts in high fire severity zones. Many of you heard the Christmas Valley lessons that we learned in the CalDor Fire. We want that throughout Senate District 4. Sadly, Senate Bill 660 just died in appropriations. So, we have a plan that we're working on here. The plan really hinges on four key areas of focus. That's training and deployment of fire-resilient workforce. We are happy that El Dorado just launched the fire management program at the Tocco Community College. I was very happy to see that, and it is a full program. We actually have students on the waitlist for that. Implementing a modern way vegetation forest management and community gardening plan, that's working with our firewise communities and ensuring that those grants are available. Expanding consumer access to homeowners' insurance market, and developing a short and long-term funding plan in the state of California. So that is my commitment to work diligently on these areas and to partner with our local electeds, as well as with our Congressman, Congressman Muntah, and ensure that we're bringing in both state financing and federal financing. So, in closing, I want to make sure that we honor our leaders here today. Thank you so much. As your Senator, I see my role as a conduit to bring your voice to the stewardship of community-led solutions of the state. I work for you. I'm not a career politician, I'm someone who points the fingers at me. First, before I point it to anywhere, anyone else, I do not pass the buck. I take my mistakes and my decisions very personally. And I ask that all of you continue to hold me accountable, especially when it comes to the safety of our communities. So like you, I live in these dangers every day, and the burden hits me close to home. So I want to thank all of you for being here today, encouraging to bring those questions forward. And thank you so much for having me.